Okay, I'd like to welcome you all to East Dundee's special meeting of the Board of Trustees, dated Monday, September 23rd, 2024, OAF 602. Franco, you take the role, please.
Trustee Triber is absent. Trustee Kunsy?
Present.
Trustee Mahoney?
Here.
Trustee Britton?
Here.
Trustee Soder?
Here.
It appears Trustee Saviano is also absent, and President Lineum.
Here. And if you'll rise and give your foot flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. That'll take us to our public comment section. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the board on an agenda or a non-agenda item? Sir, the floor is yours. Well, this is part of the announcement, play for True Patriot Care? Okay, you're coming up.
It's fine.
Yeah, we can do it now.
Circle back.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone.
No, no.
I'm Jerry Gustaferson. I'm one of the True Patriots. We've met before. And I'm also a member of the American Legion. This is our commander, Commander Beal. I think you might have met him here before, too. We want to just give you this small token of our appreciation for your support when we brought the wall from Memorial Day. It was, I hope you were able to come up there. It was a huge success. We really couldn't have done it without the support of East Dundee and Trustee Aldo Villages. I think I might have mentioned this before. You know, I grew up in carpenter stuff. And to see, it was a rarity when all three towns got it. You know, most, two as one, but both years, because we brought it five years ago also. And both times, all the towns got together. And that was, that was very good. So, if I could just read this real quick.
Please.
It says, "The Wall of Hills, Vietnam Memorial, presented by the Village of East Dundee. The American Legion Post 679, and members of the True Patriots Care Board of Directors extend their sincere appreciation and thanks for generous donation." Excuse me. With your help, we were able to accomplish our goal of bringing the Wall of Hills to our community. And that, that was our goal. And we met again the amazing Vietnam veterans, you know, that were treated, excuse me, like crap when they came home. And we met them, we talked with them. They came many hours and many days. Brought their families. And it was, it was really worth it. It was expensive, but you guys helped us. And we were able to, to make it happen. So, we wanted to come and personally thank you guys. And present you with a plaque.
Yes, absolutely.
Can I come, you?
Thank you. I appreciate this. Oh, you know what? Maybe we can get a picture here.
Yeah.
Come around.
Yes.
I'll make you guys change.
You got it.
We'll go with me first, there?
Yeah. And then you guys can look at me there. There you go.
Great, great.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much. So, Trustee, do you have anything to say, Commander?
No.
Very, very, very set it off for me. But thank you again, guys.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I'd just like to add that, you know, I like this year, and that was actually hearing the stories and overhearing the stories or talking to some of the veterans really made such a difference in my experience, because I've been there before. And so, encouraging the vets to be able to speak out about their experience to people they know and people they don't know.
That's true. And we were able to get younger children to go, you know. And that's very confusing to them, how we had a war that nobody liked. You know what I mean? But, or like, that wasn't the right word. But, but again, we couldn't have done it without you guys. So, you know, just to warn you, though, Reese across America is coming. I'll be back. So, God bless you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, and we'll go back to the audience for public comment. Anybody? Okay, seeing none, then that would be the next announcement that we have is Craig Martin's service recognition. Deputy Chief Ritter, if you'd like to floor it. Thank you.
Now, this will be a medium of plaques. Well, thank you for giving me a couple minutes here to recognize the service of Craig Martin. If you don't know Craig, he's in the back here, in his gray shirt. Mr. Martin held the position of Police Commissioner from 2007 until 2024. For those that don't know, the Police Commissioners are an integral part of the interview and hiring process for the Police Department. They are responsible for establishing minimum hiring qualifications, conducting eligibility examinations, promotional examinations, and hearings for discipline. Mr. Martin, 17 years of service on the Police Commission spanning four police chiefs. It's an honor to be up here to present Mr. Martin this plaque, because I believe 15 years ago, next month, I was the first full-time officer hired after Mr. Martin came. Mr. Martin was a member of the Police Commission that hired all but three of our current police officers on the roster. And he was a part of promoting all four of our current sergeants. So, with that, Craig, if you want to come up with a question. I got you this plaque. And a token of our appreciation.
Thank you, Chief. Thanks, Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Seventeen years, a lot of service. Okay, that'll take us to our consent agenda. It's rather long, if we could have a motion, please?
I'll make a, I'll move to approve the consent agenda items A through E.
Second.
A through what? I'm sorry?
E.
Oh, A through E. All right. Okay. Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Second, okay. Any questions? Frank, Trustee Kunsy?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Soder?
Yes.
Okay, that will then take us to the meet of our meeting, which is the other agenda items. We'll start with item A, if we could have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the village administrator to enter into an agreement with Lauderdale Electric Incorporated for the provision of services related to direct boring of conduit regarding comm ed and telecom services located at 102 North River Street and 104 to 106 North River Street in the amount of $58,840.
I'll second.
Okay, is there, could you give us just a brief update of why we're, this is obviously part of the deck and the utilities that we're putting underground, but just for the audience's purpose?
Sure. So, as part of the parking garage construction project, there are a number of utility poles that are in the parkway that would be desirable to be removed. And that is also part of the larger downtown revitalization plan is to remove as many comm ed poles or utility poles as possible to make a more pleasing aesthetic. But this, in this case, it's also very functional, because some of these poles have lines that run overhead, which if we don't remove them, will be an obstruction. So, this one specifically is for undergrounding the lines on Jackson.
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 Okay, great.
Just as a note on this one, it is waiving competitive bidding, which requires a two-thirds vote. And since we're down to trustees, President Lineum, you just will need your vote on this one to get to the two-thirds.
Okay, well, essentially, we vote. I wanted to ask Joe a quick question. We did some conduit lane for AT&amp;T a number of years ago. We wouldn't be able to join any of that with the comm ed. Could we connect those two? No? Okay. I was just thinking maybe we could. No, okay. I wasn't sure if we'd be able to maybe, because there are the, still the poles along Barrington, right in front of, you know, right along the north side of Barrington Avenue, that I thought eventually, those hopefully will go under as well. And I wasn't sure if maybe we could just kind of create a little habit rail underground that we might be able to utilize. So, okay. Okay, any other questions, comments?
So, will there, so, I, just one other question. So, there will, will there be an additional need for anything on river? Or is it only located on Jackson?
Nothing on river. But there's the one that's stretching from the kitchen and bath place on Phil to across the street. That one is also being.
And does that include it in this cost? Or is there, so we're going to see an additional request?
I think that one was under the $25,000, so it was there.
Oh, okay. That's it.
Okay, great. Frank?
Trustee Kunsy?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Soder?
Yes.
And President Lineum?
Yes. Okay, then it'll take us to item B, which is a discussion, or I'm sorry, a direction regarding the potential removal of the retaining wall located at Illinois Route 72 and North Van Buren. This is where the two houses at 2 and 4 North Van Buren were taken down recently. And so, just open the floor to the discussion about what to do with that retaining wall. I would just open it by saying, one option that we could do, depending on obviously what we plan on doing with the land to begin with, we could resurface that and just put a veneer of some sort. A fluted cement wall is pretty unsightly. But what I guess what we don't want to make, you know, we want to make sure if we remove that wall, we don't end up with the land coming in on 72 as a result.
Yeah, we don't need a landslide.
Right.
I guess that's what I'll say. But we did plan to, you know, when we originally discussed these two properties, the main point was to update that intersection so that it was safer to turn left onto 72, and that will require that wall to get pulled back. So, is the question?
A left on 72?
Left and right.
Left and right, because there's, you can't take a right-hand turn onto 72 right now on a red light, because it's such a blind turn. And it's, it's actually hard to see cars coming, even if you're taking a left.
Right.
They're supposed to stop. They don't always stop. So, it's a little challenging when you can't see the right most lane on 72. So, that wall needs to move in order for that to happen. I think, is the question here just whether we do it now? Whether we do it down the road? Part of a bigger project, doing part of it now, like?
Yeah, the, the reason this came up was because the vendor, who is doing the demolition of the homes, said, hey, while my equipment's already here, I could take that down for this much. We said we didn't really budget for that. It wasn't the current plans. But bring it to the board and let you have this conversation, because we understood that the need or the desire was there to take it down at some point. So, we could take it down now. We could also, you know, pretty it up in some way. Have the Arts Council do something on it.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
If they're taking down the wall, then are they resurfacing the lot as well? They go from essentially the parking lot to the sidewalk level?
So, Phil can fill us in on that, because he explained it all to me this morning. I was satisfied with his response.
I got part of your question. If you could repeat that.
So, I'm just wondering, is, if they're taking the wall down, are they also taking the land from the parking lot of El Faro's to the sidewalk that's on river and just making a straight gradient from one to the other, essentially?
It would. So, the actual 2 North Van Buren property would be sloped from the public sidewalk up. So, what, some of that soil that's currently existing behind the retaining wall would be used to backfill
Infill the.
in the existing basement foundations. Until the property would be graded accordingly down to the public sidewalk. The parking that's, it's on our village-owned property, but it's essentially for the restaurant that faces 2 and 4 North Van Buren. The rear yards of those properties would, most of those spaces would be maintained. The southernmost parking space, there's question, we may have to, that may be consumed with the regrading of the property down to the public sidewalk. But the driveway adjacent to the restaurant would, would be maintained.
So, this isn't just demoing the wall. It's also regrading the entire two lots. So, they'll be.
The southern portion, certainly the 2 North Van Buren property. And there would be some probably transition to grading on the 4 North Van Buren property. But essentially, yes.
And just one thing to add is that the village owns the property all the way to the border of the restaurant. So, there's a drive aisle, and then there's parking. That parking was always for those residences. Occasionally, people from the restaurant would park there, but that parking was for the residents that lived in those houses. And then, right now, we have an easement with the property owner for the restaurant to use that, to use our property to exit, because they need to go around the building to exit onto 72. So, we don't have to maintain those parking spaces for the restaurant, because they were never the restaurants to begin with. But some of them will be maintained.
Okay, fair enough. And the restaurant, I mean, we're not complaining that people do use the restaurant.
No.
And because of their limited parking situation, they, they are often used for the restaurant.
Can we widen the sidewalk there? Once we do this, set a precedent for trying to do that other places? We can't, I'm sure, do it all at once, all the way up 72. But if we do want to make it wider, this is a chance where we could tackle at least this one.
Something to be explored going forward, sure.
But could the grading be done so that it can easily accommodate that in the future? With that vision, with that vision in mind?
So, you're envisioning widening the sidewalk from Van Buren up the hill, up 72, essentially?
Yeah, the sidewalk is very dangerous, because it's pretty narrow and you're on a highway.
And you're up, you're up against the back of the curb.
And right up next to the curb. So, once we knock the wall down, we could make it wider there. And that would be ideal the whole way. But at least starting there and setting a precedent for, we want it to be wider, because it's not safe to be that tight to the road.
I mean, it's especially bad there, because the stoplight actually intrudes on the sidewalk for a good chunk of it. So, there's really just enough space for one single body to make it between the retaining wall and.
Yeah.
Are you essentially asking if we could move the sidewalk back? Or then widen it? Or both widen and move it back?
Either. I mean, it, it will not line up if it, like, jogs over. You could do that. But it is like widening it or pushing it back. Something to get residents a little more cushion. Like cyclists, if they ride up this, because they don't want to be on the street.
So.
They're really close to the cars or walk. I've walked that route many times, and it feels pretty dangerous.
There are three streetlights that are in the public sidewalk that, at the point of the, the streetlight pole, the sidewalk narrows down to a substantially narrower
Yeah.
distance at those three locations, so.
So, here's, I guess, I feel like we have a lot of ideas for what we want to have happen with that area. I think the majority of them require that wall to go.
Yeah.
The majority is also not in the budget, including that wall going. So, it's just, what do we do now, if anything, to maybe save the costs down the road, since the equipment's already there? Or do we tack it on to whatever project we decide is the final? I think the question today, I, I don't think the question is, should the wall stay or go? I think it's, should it stay or go now?
That's correct.
Yeah. And I, I don't think we have to redo the sidewalk now, but if we're regrading, regrading with the plan of, we're going to widen it. Because, yeah, we're not trying to add costs now. But I'm in favor of removing the wall, grading it, and then allowing for in the future having a safer sidewalk.
I mean, even if it was just regraded so that people could use that land a little bit and go off-roading. You know, go off-roading to escape the 72, it would be helpful for that intersection.
I think there's, there's, there's the sidewalk. There's two goals here. There's a sidewalk, and there's the sightline that we are trying to address. And the main reason why we bought this, so there were better sightlines. It was safer on that intersection. So, if we can somehow take a look at, you know, what the ideal would be so that we can accomplish that until something else is done, not just moving, having a cut-through for the sidewalk, but also getting a better sightline immediately, that would be a win.
Yeah, I mean, even if it's just, we take the wall and it's graded in a way that really allows for that.
Well, just the elevation change, our difference alone would have to require some sort of retention, correct? Joe, what do you think?
Retirement.
Unless we were to dig back so far that it would no longer.
Cut into the slope so that it could.
We'd have to, we'd have to cut in pretty far, though. I mean.
You would, yes.
Yeah, 20 feet, easy.
Four, five feet tall.
Yeah.
Yeah, it sounds like that. Yeah. Because, I mean, when you talk about the, just at the, at the northeast corner of the lots, I mean, that height compared to, say, at the corner right there, at sidewalk level, that's got to be a three, four-foot height difference, you know? And so, we'd have to do something, whether it be large boulders or something, depending how far we go back. We've got to do something.
Go back to no landslides, but, you know.
And we would regrade on the Van Buren side as well. So, not just the 72 side, but also on the Van Buren side. So, the, the entire lot essentially would be regraded at a lower elevation than what, what's, what's currently there. I believe the scope of work also contemplates saw cutting the retaining wall at or close to the elevation of the sidewalk. So, there is still foundation of the retaining wall that will remain, because that may be installed partially under the sidewalk. And we don't, we're not proposing removing, removing any sidewalk. We're just looking to eliminate mainly the sightline right now and to get rid of the retaining, to remove the retaining wall and regrade the property. And that'll give us some time to decide ultimately what we want that corner to look like.
Role be in it?
Pardon?
IDOT's role. Are they going to have anything to say about whether or not we alter the, well, sightlines? If we put in a turn lane, something like that at a, at a state road? I'm sure they're.
They'll have input, but their, the property line from State Rightaway and to North Van Buren is right at that retaining wall. So, it's my understanding, years ago.
That blocks the village?
Pardon?
The wall blocks the village, then?
It, it's real close. So, I, it's my understanding that when 72 was a two-lane road, there was angle parking up and down 72. And so, when they widened it, they cut into the 2 North Van Buren property and essentially installed the retaining wall to support the soils on, on that property. So, I don't think there would be any, so we've reached out. Caleb's been in contact with, with, with IDOT. And so, we're working on addressing any issues that could arise, but I don't foresee.
As long as we keep them in the loop, then.
Yep, exactly.
So, the question at hand is, do we want to use $10,000 from our contingency fund to add on this extra of removing the wall and regrading it?
Correct.
My answer would personally be yes. I, I would, too, as long as we know we're not getting ahead of ourselves, because depending on how long it's going to be before we do the actual work to turn it into what we ultimately hope it to be, I don't know if we'll be getting any necessarily benefit from the equipment's out there now. But are we going to be looking at a really unsightly mess for a year and a half before it turns into, like I say, what it ultimately?
That's actually grass over all this, right? Our objective is to plant seed, topsoil seed, and some type of landscape blanket.
Yeah, it'll look nicer than topsoil.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a real chain of offense, yeah.
And you're increasing your safety immediate, almost immediately.
Absolutely.
And the sightlines will improve immediately.
Well, they've got the, the excavator there on site right now, so I imagine that's what they've been using to take it down, correct?
I, I think they're ready to start tomorrow. Is that my understanding? Or this week, potentially?
We reach out for soon tomorrow. And I can't speak on it very often tomorrow, but they'll do.
Sometime fairly soon.
Well, that's all brick, isn't it? The same ones that are going to be doing the boring on Jackson. So, it's hard, I mean, they're going to be in town for a while, so.
They might not want to work when it's pouring rain tomorrow. On a, on a muddy grade.
So, it is a change order to an existing contract, and I believe that it's above the threshold. So, if there's direction to proceed, we'll go ahead and give them authorization, and then it will be on the next agenda for approval, sort of, after that.
Okay, very good.
Yes.
Well, access to do that.
Better than, better not than waiting, I suppose, so. Is everybody?
Of course, I've had nods.
Agree on that?
Yep.
Okay, super. Thanks, Phil. All right, and that'll take us to our next item, which is another direction item regarding the potential improvements to the Village Hall and to the police station parking lots. And so, would this be Joe or Phil, or do you?
It's Caleb.
It's like Caleb.
No, no, it's totally fine. We can, I mean, it's, we'll all defer to Phil and Joe as needed as well.
Caleb has done a lion's share of work on this particular project, so.
All right.
Here to support him.
So, well, so, I guess I'll just start and present this. So, this is a Village Hall improvements project. It's four phases. So, there's a lot kind of going on. We can talk about timeline, the, the order of this, but it's four main phases. First is diagonal parking on Third Street, which would create that into a one-way southbound. And the intention there is to make, to add parking for the downtown area and just the area at large, should be 20 spaces. And then, the second phase would be to create the five that's currently on the west end of Village Hall. That will be a green space, like, right in front of the police station. So, that would be a green space. And then, the third phase would be to create a new parking lot for employees and the, and the dirt lot that is right next to the police station on Railroad, like, where those walnut trees are by the, by the river. And then, the fourth phase would be to resurface the current lots, the, the current Village Hall lots, resurface it and open it up to the public for public parking.
You know, you know we love more parking.
Yeah.
Do you want to pull up the pictures?
Well, and then, so this is renders that Dundee Landscaping did for the green screen project, or the green space project.
Right up, right out here.
Yes, correct. So, imagine, these are the five spots right here. This is where people are parking on the side of Village Hall. This is some renderings that they have come up with.
I did see some renderings in the packet that had an accessible space right there, too?
Yes. So, so, we've added, basically, I'll, I'm going to just pull up the.
Sorry.
So, those, those are now outdated, because this is, this came later in the week.
Okay.
So, basically, what the project is, is adding these spaces here, the 20 spaces. And then, so what you saw in the packet originally was parallel spaces. If we did that, we would lose a lot of this parking here. So, that's why we're deciding not to do that.
Can we make, I mean, wouldn't we want to make some of those handicap spots?
Yes. So, so right here, so it's not obviously articulated in the map, but this would be an ADA spot right here. And then, this would be the, the loading zone with the lines there. And then, so these do not count. So, there's 20 parking, 20 spaces here, not including the ADA spot.
It's a ton of spaces.
Okay.
So, they're getting 20 spaces, one ADA space.
And then, we'd be repaving the other, like, we'd be creating a lot for staff, and we'd be repaving the lot next door for.
Public.
Public.
Yes.
Would the staff lot ever be public?
It could be if we wanted to contemplate that and possibly, like, after a certain number of hours. I mean, the challenge is, we do have a lot of police officers that park over there.
Totally fair.
And we kind of want to, you know, keep that lot to be.
I mean, it's nice to have dedicated staff parking, especially for our police department.
Yeah.
I mean, we're opening up. How many spaces are in the existing lot?[1757.14]
Nine.
Nine?
Yeah, so, in total, with all these phases, if we don't include the, the new employee lot, it's twenty-four new spaces for residents and for people. So, because we have the twenty here, we do lose the five, so twenty-nine minus five is twenty-four.
So, so in order to get the diagonal parking though, you've got Third Street now turning into a one-way.
Correct, between Barrington and Railroad.
Going south.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That is back of...
And you're also closing off.
That's in back of Colin and Joe's house.
No, we would, it would just be one way from Barrington to Railroad, correct?
Correct.
Okay, Joe, I'm wondering if this would be in your ballpark? We'd end up with two one-way streets going in the same direction from a traffic standpoint, and do you think that's gonna cause a problem? You know, just from a mobility standpoint? I don't know if the chief would wanna weigh in, but it would be something to consider. I mean, if, if it were circular, that would be obviously not an issue, but I'm just wondering if two one-ways is gonna cause any problems that way? Because, well, Meyer's gonna go all the way through to Hill, but it'll be a two-way obviously on Railroad, or on Third, all the way up to Railroad from Hill, but then it turns into a one-way, I don't know if that's gonna, it's just something to think about.
I think because Barrington Avenue is your local collector, most of your traffic is gonna be that bad.
It's gonna come from there.
Yeah, okay.
Going that direction makes sense.
The only other two things I would question then, or wanna raise would be the rendering that Dundee Landscaping did looks really nice, but they've got brick, and brick is a pain in the butt. Maintenance, it weathers poorly over time, and I would just suggest that we do a pigmented and stamped concrete, because that would be much more durable to do, and a lot cheaper. Throw in a little bit of powder in with the mix, and then stamp it to make it look like the brick.
So, what did we just do downtown?
That makes it impermeable.
Right.
Well, no, I...
Where brick is semi, if it was a brick, it was semi-permeable.
Well, it's very porous, and, and over time, it, it does wear out and it flakes. And I'm just, and, you know, you end up with insects that come up in between the, the cracks, and you end up with shifting and stuff over time. I just think it would be, from a maintenance standpoint, a better way to go, or at least to consider it, to pigment the cement and stamp it.
So, the original idea with this is there is a section of pavers already out there right now in front of the police station, so that we...
There is.
Yeah, so, I mean, of course, we can, we can take that out as well.
So, I guess that's, that's the whole thing, you know, is that there aren't actually any price tags attached to any of this right now. So, I guess you can, you can put it as a line item, so, you know, brick...
Options. We'd like to see options on what the sidewalks are.
You know, potential, you know, alternative, because...
We do have a lot of brick in the downtown, right?
We do.
It does make some sense to match that.
Well, and, and I think we could. I'm just saying, if the more we add to it, I mean, it's expensive. A lot more expensive to put brick in.
I think it's worth investigating, yes. Different, different types. I mean, not just, it doesn't have to just be concrete or just be brick either. Like, there are a bajillion options out there for pavers, so...
And the other item would be for the south, the west lot here that we're talking about, you know, surfacing or whatever, and redoing for, you know, appropriating then for public use would be, can it be raised? You know, I mean, it really slopes pretty badly where the creek comes in to the, to the south end of the parking lot, and I'm just wondering if that...
It would be leveled off.
Would it? I mean, because that, it's gonna be considerable. I don't know if there would have to be piers put in or what, but some, I mean, it'd be fairly large undertaking, but it would, I think, be worth it, because it's not in great shape as it is. And if all we're gonna do is just put, you know, a couple of gallons of black coop on it, repaint the lines, eventually we're gonna, you know, and it's not gonna be too far into the future, we'll be doing it again, wishing we changed, so...
It's probably in the floodlights, we have to be sensitive to adding, uh, floodlights.
Yeah, okay. But yeah, I think it'd be worthwhile to consider, you know, shoring up that west, that southwest edge, that corner there, and try and raise it, like I say, even it up.
So, that is currently listed as, you know, phase four in this project, because there are some cylinder, some cement cylinders that have been found from when the mobile Village Board unit was there, so that would need to be taken out. So, that would be, we don't really understand the cost of that more than the other phases, so that would be kind of a pretty heavy...
So, phase one is change, is making the street one-way, painting it.
Well, well, and so also, keep in mind, so like, it's a little bit more than that, but yes. So, like, this right away here, the grass, that would be gone to account for this space. And then, right here to the left and right, these get extended to help, you know, kinda flow.
Short fallouts.
Exactly, yeah.
To shorten the sidewalk crossing.
Okay, so if we were to go with the, the green space that we're talking about, is that green portion up there to the top, right, correct?
Correct.
So, I guess it really wouldn't be a terrible thing, maybe to have to redo it, but in long-term down the road, we did have plans for an expanded Village Hall. If we are, I don't know, I mean, if we're gonna continue to grow with, with what I think we can over the next, you know, fifteen, twenty-five, maybe forty years, we might end up finding need before then for expanded room in the Village Hall. Originally, that's where we were going, so whatever we do there, we might end up having to redo, but it's, if it's just cement, I mean, it's really not gonna be that big a deal, but...
Build out that way, that could be around the front door.
No, well, the building wasn't actually, no.
That's all conversation that other people on the board don't know any of.
Yeah, I mean, if the, with the plans that we have, the actual, and it's interesting that those parking spaces are angled that way, because if you'll, if you'll imagine, like, say, the, the first space, the one on the end, going straight back into the corner, the rendering was actually for a courtyard to be constructed of that triangle that would be formed, and the building itself would then be the triangle going along Barrington Avenue, cutting back. And it was really kind of a cool idea, because it added quite a bit of space, and it was two-story or three maybe, and it really, it mimicked the Flatiron Building in New York, if you know what that one looks like. I mean, at one time considered the ugliest building in the country, but it, you know, mounted an icon, so we could...
Hey Jeff, when did that rendering come about?
When, I'm sorry?
When did that rendering come about?
It was probably twenty-ten perhaps?
Okay.
Twelve, maybe?
I thought I was losing my mind, thank you!
I'm still, I mean, if we were to discover that we no longer had those renderings, I wouldn't be surprised if it was that long ago, but the, the drawings and the, they weren't ever certified, so they didn't cost us a whole lot of money, but it was very cool. It was a really nice and efficient use of the space that we had. But it meant tearing down the old portion, not the old portion, I'm sorry, but the, the more recent portion of Village Hall, and keeping the, the historic half with the bell tower, and then building that out, so it was...
Yeah, I did see those renderings when I first started here, and the price tag that was associated with it. And I think that with the limited resources that we have, it's...
Down the road.
Long-term thinking, like, there's so much we need to do in other parts of the community that, you know, it wouldn't be ever a recommendation to say we need to expand the Village Hall. And I say that because even knowing that every single person on my staff disagrees with me. We've, we've made a lot of investment in the Village Hall over the past year and a half, and it's resulted in more efficient use of the space, and allowed more people to have individual offices, and I think everybody appreciates that investment and how we're trying to make what we currently have better. And so, I think the Village Hall is sufficient for what we need, I would even say for the next ten years, and, and sort of giving this, this space back to the community, maybe having a sculpture, like, I would love to see some public art. It would be more welcoming, and it would just really make the space more inviting, and...
Well, you know, it's interesting, because I've used the, the police station little area for online sales for transfer, and I swear to God, I can't even tell you how many people don't know where the entrance is.
Yeah.
Because there isn't something like this that, you know, kinda showcases, right?
Now, along those lines, we do have a side door for Village Hall where this very lovely place is going to be, where the front door is sort of around. Are we thinking about anything with the side door?
Well, that, I mean, just to, to give up, give that side of the building a facelift, yeah.
I think we would just say like employee entrance or something like that.
That makes, that, thank you for understanding where my brain was.
But as far as like phasing this, this is a very easy to implement bang for our buck to add significant amount of spaces in the downtown in the very near term.
Yeah, yeah.
So, for that, you know, we would propose adding this to the 2025 budget and constructing this in the spring, for the spaces. The green space, you know, we need to get pricing on that, and we could get, you know, several different options of, you know, here's sort of our entry level, here's sort of like, maybe in a couple of years, if we had some more money, we'd add this. We'd love to do some lighting, so at night it looks more...
Probably lighting. Some police department.
Some landscape lighting.
No, okay.
Sun.
I mean, we need lighting in that lot too.
Yes.
We need, and that, the, the, I'm sorry, I keep pointing out here, everybody who's actually in the audience has no idea what I'm talking about. This lot over here where people kinda park right now, the one thing that I would say is that if the new lot, if folks are having to walk to Village Hall or walk to places, we'd need to figure out that little driveway area that gets used a lot. Do we want cars to be able to use it? Do we not want cars to be able to use it? Do we want it to be a walkway? It's kind of narrow to do all of those things. So, I'd wanna make sure we had that figured out before we sort of finalize plans. I love the ideas here. I love getting twenty-four new parking spaces. I think that's awesome. My only other question is the prioritization. I totally understand the resurfacing being last, especially after Caleb explained kind of why it is. I'm just wondering about the new parking lot for employees.
I think that when we start talking about the 2025 budget, we would propose to do the new employee parking lot and the Third Street one-way additional spaces as priority projects for 2025.
Okay.
And then, see how much of the green space we could convert, at least get initially started.
Got it.
And then, 2026 would be any additional enhancements to the green space, plus get some more concrete pricing on the Village Hall current parking lot. I think it's gonna be the most expensive part of this.
Got it. I appreciate the breakdown.
I think we'd be wrong, and if we get pricing that's, comes in more reasonable than I'm expecting, we can propose it for next year as well, but I think we do have a significant amount of funding from the TIF that this would be fully to support it, so it wouldn't be anything out of the campbell budget.
So, are you, I'm sorry, are you envisioning the new employee lot to be concrete then, and not asphalt?
I, I don't have an opinion on that, was it?
We, we have not, we've been just starting to look at quotes and stuff, but we have not landed on one way or the other.
I'm sorry, Scott.
Another option for that lot would be also a permeable surface.
Yes, yeah, a hundred percent, yeah.
Type surface. Or they make like those grids to the, like, green, yeah.
Yep.
I was just gonna say, I really like that green space rendering. Awesome, love it. I think though, that as far as the employee lot, once you open up those twenty-some spots, those are never gonna be full when you guys get to work. They're gonna be empty every time. I mean, nobody's gonna be using those at eight o'clock in the morning on a weekday, is my guess.
You mean along Third, you mean?
Yeah, on Third Street.
Well, six or eight of them will be used from Spoo's Hair Cutting right now, because they're lined up along Third right now every morning.
Yeah.
They take up the whole...
Three minutes available.
And a third of them anyway will be used.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Good that they're getting so much business.
Yep.
Well, those are all employees, but yeah.
They currently consume about half the distance between Grove and, and our current parking spaces, so there's, could six, solid six cars daily that use.
To interject, they're also using the space at Meyer too, their employees.
Oh, yes.
So, we expect that the businesses and employees would use that a lot.
Fair enough. So, if nothing else, this'll make coming down to the Village Hall to pay your water bill a much more pleasurable experience.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Campaigns, those online, everybody, just so we all know.
We did that too.
Uh, one thing to add, just because it's not really touched on in the memo, but the garbage dumpsters that are here, the idea is to make a concrete pad, whereas it's the HC here, that will be a concrete pad for the dumpsters, so that kinda makes this less congested here. If you ever walked in this alley, it's a little congested now.
A little noisy.
So, I'm, I'm kinda confused. Where, where are we looking at here? Is this the one, the, the police department then?
Yes.
On the south end?
This is east of the police lot, yeah. And then there's, so this is the memo, in the memo, but there's seven, I believe it was, seven walnut trees that would have to get taken down, so that's why that is listed as phase three, just for that part.
Can we replant elsewhere? Thank you.
Well, we should know those walnut trees and the boards cost fourteen bucks a board foot right now, so it's pretty pricey.
So, literally, we just wanted to get consensus that everybody is on board with making Third a one-way. That would be the biggest change in all of this. But if, if everybody seems to be open to the idea, then we'll go ahead and start...
I think it's totally worth it for the parking.
...budget this for hopefully spring construction.
Great.
We've got, we've got two of the businesses here, how do, that are adjacent to that. How do you guys feel about that?
Downtown?
All right?
Hundred percent.
Awesome, awesome. Great, we like to be good neighbors.
Any way we can add more parking to our downtowns would be a good thing, so... Okay, anything else?
Thanks, Caleb.
Yeah, thank you, Caleb.
Caleb, thank you. Okay, that'll take us to item D then, which is public comment policy discussion. Eric, would you like to lead this one?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna hand it off to Tracy Soder in a second, because he brought this to us and had given us an example from, from these Lagrange Park that's in the packet. He's also drafted what he wants to propose as a comment policy, so I can put those out in...
Yeah, passing around. We can add to this or edit it, this is just a starting point, but I've noticed other villages handing out, having these out there, as well as the form that you hand in to Franco saying, "I want to speak." But this would be their takeaway before they speak, that they know, boil it down to just four simple guidelines, trying to keep it as short as possible. But when to speak, when you're called up, introduce yourself and where you're from, letting them know there's a five-minute time limit, and then also board response, letting them know that this is not a conversation forum, that it is public comment. This is not an agenda item that we're allowed to discuss openly, since it wasn't announced ahead of time, so just letting them know, because it has seemed like most residents feel like it's rude when they talk to someone and they won't respond to them, and they don't know that we're advised by legal not to have, treat this as an agenda item discussion. So, I think that little thing about open meeting acts at the bottom lets them know that this is an actual rule called the open meeting act, so this is a starting point, but open to any suggestions, but I think it'll go a little further towards setting expectations for public comment and what they're supposed to do.
Good enough.
Yeah, I forget where I was, but there was something very similar to the civility pledge that I think could be added to this. I don't think it's on...
It's in the packet.
It's in the packet.
It's in the packet, but it's not in your draft.
Yeah, that was, well, the meeting I went to was a page like this, and then a civility page after it, so it could be on the back of this.
Or it's a part of, or it's a part of...
Or it could be at the bottom, just a little civility pledge. I think we could fit it.
They had it at IML this weekend, too.
So, if we did want to adopt the civility pledge, then going forward, it would appear in the packet for every meeting.
Long bar.
Okay.
And we could also post it somewhere in its room outside.
Yeah, I think posting some of these things kind of on the door would be useful too, so that when you're walking in, you kind of see it, you know?
Little reminder, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the Lagrange Park things, the rules for public comment. That's covered, that's covered. I like item three though, can we throw that one in there somewhere? The profane or obscene language, and please don't threaten people with bodily harm. Let's hope we don't need that, but we should probably throw it down in writing just in case.
I felt like that was a given, but...
I know, I don't accept givens in my world.
Honestly, I think it's part of civility pledge, but just nice, more nicely stated.
That is, more nicely stated. I, the, you're right, the civility pledge covers that. I do like this. Please don't threaten people with bodily harm.
Okay, cool.
I guess I would just say, you know, we are, we're a small, small town. We have somewhat informal meetings. Some of us consider that a feature in the book. Some of us like to have an open conversation with residents. And I think we have bad nights sometimes, where we get residents in here that are upset, and it makes everybody wanna create a big public comment policy. But I mean, those happen once a year, and I think that we should be cautious about... But I mean, those happen once a year, and I think that we should be cautious about limiting public comment in reaction to things that happen every once in a while. Because I personally, I value, I, I view as part of our transparency that we are an informal meeting, that, that people can sometimes chime into out of turn.
I think something I'd like to add to this is having our business cards available up there. So that, uh, like on the podium where they're supposed to be talking, so that it can be something that's added in here or something that we can say, or a little note can be put up there that's, if, you know, please understand that the discussion isn't really, I mean, kind of, we shouldn't be doing it before the attorneys get twitchy. Um, so can we, can we have the cards up there so that, you know, people can take all of our cards? And they have it right there to reach out to us to continue the conversation.
Yeah, that's, that's all I want, good.
And not that there's not a boilerplate, there's not a boilerplate answer, but I think that one thing that we haven't really offered up is, you know, reach out to Franco or Erica, and so that we could put it on the agenda for a more healthy discussion with a proper background and the home night yards at our next meeting. Um, if they're feeling like they really need to get a response back from us.
And just to note, if you have adopted a public comment policy, it doesn't mean that if a resident comes in here and there's one person here, they couldn't talk, and if you wanted to respond to them, but it just, it gives you the option, if there is a contentious meeting, to have rules in place that can be, you know, enforced, you know, as the presiding officer then, as long as they're, it, that one meeting, you know, obviously have to be uniformly, um, applied to everyone, but if, you know, all of a sudden you do have the meetings where there's something controversial, and you have fifty people in the audience, and you can impose a time limit, and to have things to have an orderly discussion, it doesn't necessarily have to be done at every meeting. But if you don't have a policy, uh, you can use it if it's ever needed.
Well, I think we have a policy in our code, it's just that we don't really advertise a lot of it. Like, we have a.
It's not communicated.
It's not communicated in a way that people who are speaking really understand. Yeah, I mean, five minutes, um, yeah, I mean, some of this stuff's already in there. It's just that it's not really communicated well, and people get startled when they don't get what they're expecting from the board.
Yeah, I've met with several people, uh, who spoke and expected to have a dialogue with the whole room, have something voted on, and solve their problem by the end of it, and that's not what we're allowed to do. So if we were allowed to say, "Yeah, we can do that," then we should throw this away and make our own rules. But I feel like since that is a rule, I don't like it being a secret rule that they don't know, and it just seems like we're rudely not responding to public comments when we easily could. Uh, but is it an actual rule that we should not have discussions and long back and forths, uh, based on a public comment? That it should be one-way and not two-way?
When we got our training, it was sort of.
You mean one-way?
Yeah.
It's, we recommend, we highly recommend that that be the policy of not, um, providing, having a discussion, and, um, you know, public comment is meant, meant for comments to be received, and then, you know, if it's a, you know, easy response or a thank you, you know, we're not saying you can't speak, uh, but, you know, oftentimes, it's not meant, public comment is not meant to be necessarily a back and forth. Um, and so, you know, we recommend that it, uh, just, you know, staff then is either, you know, as the presiding officer, president, I would say, you know, staff will reach out and get back to you, um, if there is a question. So it doesn't have to necessarily, just someone says something and everyone, you know, like stares at them. But I, but it certainly, um, you know, certainly no action can be taken on something that's not on the agenda.
Right.
Um, you know, things could, but, you know, you're supposed to only discuss agenda items as well. Public comment, people bring up other things, um, and, you know, whether or not it amounts to an open meetings act violation, I think, um, would be a case by case, maybe, call, but we certainly would.
Would it be an open meetings act?
Would it, or would it?
Would, in what case would it be? I'm curious. I, I've never heard this idea before, so I'm just curious. What would constitute being an open meetings act violation? As long as we're not voting on something.
Yeah.
I was under the impression we could talk about whatever we want, essentially. I mean, we do during our trustee reports, we wanna have to talk about trustee items, so.
We recommend it to be a general policy to, you know, that not to, we're, because then everyone's gonna expect you to engage in lengthy discussion and have a responsive nature. And so that just is what our recommendation is, to have, um, public comment, and then, you know, if it's a, if it's an easy response, sure, you know, or, you know, if it's someone just coming in to say, "Public works," or something, if you're doing things, you know, that's, I'm not, we're not, certainly not saying that can be addressed, but if someone comes in, you know, a series of questions about, you know, why their sidewalk is uneven or something, or a dangerous street that they're concerned about, um, I think just the expectation shouldn't be that the board's gonna respond, write comments on it. I think, you know, typically, you know, um, the village administrator can, you know, direct staff then later on to, uh, if it's necessary to follow up. Um, but that's kind of just our, our, our general recommendation to all of our clients is always to.
So it's a recommendation, not a rule?
Sure, yeah, I, I guess, yes. Uh, it is a strong recommendation, uh, that we make.
Strong.
No, it's not a, it's not a rule.
No. I'm gonna go ahead and go with the strong recommendation over here and add the civility pledge.
Well, we shouldn't, we shouldn't, I, I would say, if we're gonna have these guidelines, we shouldn't put it in here that it's a rule, that we cannot engage in unplanned discussion. If it's not, that's all I'm asking.
You'd say we are advised by.
We are advised by our, to. Sure.
Yeah.
We're strongly advised.
We are strongly advised by councilmen, too.
I will tell you this, and I, and I'm not sure, um, if it's been shared with you, and I, I think it has been, and that it was maybe too robust of a policy, that we, we've had it, my firm has template public comment rules. Uh, we, it's lengthy, um, we can certainly pare it down, and I know we have, we certainly have language about responding to public comments that we can offer, um, to provide to you. And, you know, I, I can, would be happy, you know, to take this, um, as, you know, what we want to do, and, you know, one-pager kind of thing.
One-page or plain language.
Yeah, with a big font and.
Yeah, in a big font. One-page, plain language, big font.
Propose something, propose something that works with, and, you know, and we reminded everyone here that, you know, we, obviously, the open meetings act is meant to encourage public comment, and it is, we limit it as, um, necessary to be able to conduct business, but at the same time, most, anything that people come up to say, you know, is acceptable, and it, it's very, it, there's, um, a tremendous amount of First Amendment, uh, concerns at stake, so we, um, make sure, you know, that we can, we'll create these guidelines, but at the end of the day, our goal, you know, I think is on the same as yours, to allow for as much comment and involvement by the public as we can.
Well, unplanned discussions, too, I think maybe is probably leaning up against the idea of discussion that's of a detailed nature in the hopes of a resolution, and that's not what this is meant to be. Sometimes when people get up and they address the board, that's what they're aiming for, and that's not what the public comment was meant to do, so we can kind of word it that way, so.
I think this is a really good starting point, and I appreciate that Trusty Satter put it together, and I think that there's going to be a happy medium between sort of like what I, what I think that you all are thinking and what I think that she's thinking.
I, that's why I, I greatly pare it down.
I'm volunteering to work with Caitlin to put together sort of these thoughts with those thoughts, and come up with something that, that I think would be welcoming, because I think that's what our goal is.
Like, we are interested.
We want to encourage and welcome this feedback, those three things, encouraging, welcoming, and feedback. And we'll try to figure out a way to model that into something that, um, we can bring back hopefully at the next meeting.
Yeah, and I don't think it'll be much different than what we have here.
No, it's just gonna.
Just maybe, just honestly, the open meetings act compliance, just and a couple other, um, you know, maybe adding, um, as Trusty Britton, uh, mentioned, something about, uh, the, you know, language and.
Yeah, and I'm totally fine acquiescing that to the civility pledge.
Yeah, and so do we want to move forward also with adopting the civility pledge?
Yes.
Yes.
Well.
Something to its effect.
So Neil and I met in the city league, crafted this.
Yeah.
Pledge as a feel-good opportunity, uh, after a lot of really difficult meetings that have been occurring over the last, I would say, seven, five to seven years. And by adopting it, really, you're just passing a resolution, saying that you endorse the concept of the civility, civility pledge. Now, whether we put it in our packet every week, or we just put it on the wall, it's really just up to the board what, what level of adoption you want to encourage. So I would listen to your feedback on if you think we should, if we did adopt it, hang it on the wall, put it in a packet, you know, whatever, whatever you choose.
I think a really appropriate place to put it on is that, um, form that they fill out, that they have to sign, with their name and their, you know, their name and their address, and that they wanna speak and what subject, this public comment registration form. That's a perfect place to put it. The other place we saw it was on the inside of the podium.
Right.
As, um, uh, as a reminder, I don't know.
Bullet points.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, so, you know, by them filling this out, they're already kind of, um, the expectation that we have for the type of discourse is very clear.
I also will, just for the devil's advocate of the IML and why they put this together, it wasn't really all, all directed at people coming to public comment. It was also directed at the healthy discourse amongst village boards and city councils.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Absolutely. We should all take it to heart.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm not against the civility pledge. If that was the, uh.
Sure.
I've, I've actually been previously at meetings where members of the village board swore at people at public comment.
Oh, jeez.
It was absolutely embarrassing.
Well, we don't have.
My husband's never had it here.
Yay.
Not yet.
There's all these top.
No, if you guys saw public comment at some other meeting, none of my clients, obviously, they're all wonderful. I, I think you would understand why a lot of communities adopt public comment rules, and, uh, you know, uh, we luckily, not yet, would, have a fairly, um, pleasant public comment experience for the most part.
Which is why when the IML brought this out a year ago, I didn't even bring it forward, because I didn't feel like we had a problem. But it's also just a good thing to do, so.
Housekeeping.
Yeah.
Good enough. Okay, I think we got some good direction on that, so then we'll move on to, uh, reports. We'll go around the room. I, I can start out. Um, just let everybody know that, um, this Friday and Saturday, we have our Oktoberfest, so that's gonna be a really good, uh, really good event, it always is, so come one, come all. That's really actually all I got for, uh, for this week, so. Scott?
Uh, well, I did do our river cleanup, part of the, uh, Fox River, our Fox River Day, for, uh, Brendan the Fox. River was actually much cleaner than it's been the last couple of years, so I don't know if people are feeling like they should be cleaner or what, but wasn't as much garbage, except for the parking lot behind, uh, Main Street, or Seventy-Two.
Teddy's Main there.
Rivalries, uh, and I don't understand why we have, in our, uh, special permit for the Elgin Mall, we make them, we make Bobby clean up his parking lot three times a week, or four times a week, or whatever, but this guy that owns this parking lot has no impetus whatsoever to clean up his parking lot, and I don't understand that. I really don't. And I guess I'm asking as I say this. Why is it that we don't have some method of telling him that every once in a while, he's gonna have to clean up his lot?
We, we do have, you know, minimum code compliance standards that the building official enforces, and usually, um, when it's observed or reported to us, then the building inspector will go out and inspect, and in some cases, uh, write notices of violation, and then if we get compliance, then the person doesn't have to go to adjudication, but if there is no compliance, then they go to adjudication. So in this, in this instance, I will ask the building inspector to go out there tomorrow and observe the conditions, which we probably are clean now.
They're fine now, because we just cleaned them all up. It took six contractor bags, okay? So it's not a small mess, and this is every year I do this.
Yeah.
That's what we get there, is about five to six contractor bags with the garbage.
Okay. We will put it on our bi-weekly.
I think it's worth talking to him, at least.
And I think you have a total, did you have a total of eight bags total, I believe?
At, behind, behind.
No, just total.
Oh, total, right. There was two, okay, so that's a good point, Phil. From, from, uh, all the way from the border to, you know, to Route Seventy-Two, say, along the river, we had really one contractor bag. There were very two half-full bags, and then behind there, that's where it all is. And it's not down by the river. It's in that lot, which.
I know this has been addressed with the owner of that property.
Yeah.
Up against the river, but it has, just, uh, Mr. Strother mentioned, we can revisit it. But he, he, he has been communicated with in the past about that situation.
Yeah.
We'll put it on our bi-weekly report until we get the compliance that we're seeking.
Okay, um, and I don't have anything else, I'll leave that. But thank you. And thank you, Phil, for helping us out with some supplies for that, too. That was very kind.
Amy?
Uh, went to the IML conference, uh, went to a lot of very interesting seminars. There were just a couple points of things that I thought were interesting to share. The, um, there was one session on the aquifers where groundwater is coming from for our wells, uh, throughout all of the suburbs. A big trend of all the suburbs around us switching to Lake Michigan water, because those aquifers, they're all connected from here out to Iowa, and they've been measuring them, and they've gone down like a hundred feet over the last decade, and that they're almost, I think they said by twenty thirty, they were gonna run out of water in Aurora, and so Aurora has switched to Lake Michigan water. They said that we're all tapping into the same underground aquifers, and that they're getting depleted, so I brought up with Phil of like, "Hey, should we be looking into that?" Uh, because it sounds like we might be forced into that eventually. It was Champagne fir, Champagne County first that was doing a lot of work on the one that goes from, there's like two giant aquifers in the state, and they were more dealt with the one south of us, but it sounds like some suburbs have been dealing with that. Um, so that was something that was off my radar, worth looking into. Another on TIF redevelopments, as TIPS come offline, um, they mentioned that we can recapture those funds, and it won't cost the residents anything on their property taxes, but my question is, how do we do that without it showing up on the property tax bill as a fee? Because it seemed like that was the reason we voted not to recapture TIP funds, is because there would be a portion on all the residents' bills, and it's being redistributed, these costs, but it looks like it's coming from residents, so that was an area that I wasn't sure. And we don't have a TIP coming online right now, but, uh, to better understand how that could be recaptured without adding to property taxes. And then a few things for, there was a notification system, uh, some, there, there were a lot of, uh, courses on embracing new technologies and platforms and digitizing things to streamline, but there was like a notification platform I'll hand off to Franco to check out, that looked really good, uh, that's tied into a lot of other things, like licensing and bill payment, but also ways to notify residents of any disasters or a water main breaking, um, and then some things to make, uh, like financials a lot easier for residents to see budget versus actual, and be able to sift through things online very easily, um, so some things to share with Brandon. And then lastly, one on floodplains that was very interesting, the, a theme throughout all of these was to communicate a lot more often about all of the issues. Uh, and in floodplains, making sure homes that are in a floodplain realize that they only get to spend fifty percent of their home's value on any damages that happen, so if you were in a floodplain and you had an insurance claim. and you had an insurance claim for hail damage, um, then that counts towards like the life of your home. You only get to spend fifty percent of your home value without, if you go above it, then you have to bring your whole home up to code, which would be very cost prohibitive for any old home. Um, and I might be misunderstanding it, but, um, but like communicating that so residents know, like, uh, throughout the process, what some of these rules are in floodplains. Uh, just putting a pile of rocks in your yard is, uh, needs to be permitted. You can't displace and have water then spill somewhere else out of your yard. So a lot of things that I thought would be helpful for us to communicate to residents about floodplains. But I'll stop there. Uh, there is, I did, uh, download all of the PDFs of the presentations and put them on a, a drive, uh, on the village that if anybody wants to access any of them, let me know. I can link them to you. I sent, uh, to Erica and Franco. Um, but yeah, there are some great notes in there if you just want to browse topics and then learn about something.
Cool, great.
Yep.
Phil?
No report.
Joe? Uh, Caitlin?
Uh, no report other than, um, I, I think mostly, you know, Kelly injured her back, so it's just why she's not here tonight. She's doing much better and hopefully will be. But if you have, like, reached out to her and she hasn't responded, that would be the reason why, but she was doing...
I wasn't wrestling with an alligator.
It was, that was it.
That's the story we're going to start.
No, but she's, I, she's, so she's just been slightly out of attention. Doing much better, stay outside, but hopefully will be, uh, the next, uh, well, one of us will be at the next meeting. I don't know who, but, uh, hopefully if I'm here, it won't be because she's still hurt.
Yes.
Great. Sarah?
Um, well, I'm going to piggyback on Andy's report because I went to IML as well and that floodplain information thing, I feel is something that we really need to get out to our residents. There's so much about what you can and cannot build in a floodplain, the different levels of the floodplain, getting the new maps done. That session was huge. Um, the running, there was also one on lead pipes that I thought was really interesting. Lots of stuff, like you said, about the data processing and digitizing. GIS came up a bajillion times because it's vital to getting good, solid information out to our residents. Um, and I'd say the running theme for all of the presentations I saw was communication. And I know that that's come up here and I just, you know, I walking the expo kept trying to grab like any communication supports and things like that, found some really interesting places. Cool one, we'll actually print a newsletter for free because they'll get your ad pages together and stick them in there and it's cost sharing. So it was like, oh, that's neat. Um, but it's also, they do the print and an online, like digital newsletter side by side, so really great conference. Um, I won the Stanley Cup, which was very, not the Stanley Cup unfortunately, but... So that was just...
I knew you skated.
I know. It was just a fun little, like, fun, fun moment. Um, but yeah, overall, what I really took away was GIS system and just communication overall. Um, and Phil, I have to send out a thank you from some of the ladies at Gardner Place. They were apparently sitting outside somewhere in town and one of the public works people was working on sidewalks and repaving and there was, um, a dent, like a damaged spot in one of the accessible parking spaces and they complained about it and right then and there filled it, fixed it and it was done. So, thank you. I don't have any better information than that.
I think that was about rivers.
It entirely possible. So thank you to whoever and however that happened. That's all.
That's it.
Caitlin, cool.
Um, let's see, um, we haven't really had an opportunity to talk, but, um, uh, since then, but this kind of old news, Long Meadow opened up. Um, and, um, the driving experience was great. I heard there was also a more of a, a bike trail. Have you been up on the bike trail yet? Um, so there is yet another bike trail that is parallel to, um, the, our river trail, Fox River Trail. Um, so that's exciting. Hoping, hoping that some of the commuter traffic that we see coming down Bonny Dundee to go over the Main Street, Carmakersville Bridge is kind of lightened up because that's a lot faster, um, to, to go through, um, than, um, last Friday was the grand opening for the Elgin Mall and I was there for that and I just want to, I want to thank Phil and Andy and Chris were there in, in attendance and, um, Mark Quadrati, um, from the fire department was there. Given, um, a lot of great, um, appreciation from Rosa and the whole crew and got to meet Christine Castro, who we have to thank for hooking, her hooking Rosa up with us. And the best part about it was, um, John Skillman, uh, actually we had two, uh, um, John Skillman, the mayor of Carverville and, um, another trustee were also there and he had admitted in person, actually during his little speech, that he was a little jealous of us that we ended up with it instead of, um, Carmakersville, so um, that's nice. And I just was really impressed with the kind of community that this whole mall is really bringing to the area and, um, I'm really, really excited to, to see what kind of our first receipts are going to end up being, um, when we get, when we get the taxes in on that. Um, also wanted to thank Brandish, who's not here, for parade session, uh, strategic plan, um, and everybody else that was involved with that, so that's what I have. And, oh, I will be at, um, Oktoberfest and have a Friday night, I think, uh, session, um, working that. And my Saturday just opened up, so Catherine needs more volunteer...
I missed my Saturday too, so. You did?
That's it.
Yeah, just piggybacking on the strategic planning session from last Monday, uh, there was also the comprehensive plan, uh, session on Wednesday. So Franco and I are working on a press release to update the community on where we are at today on both of those processes and, uh, continuing to push how people can get involved and continue to be informed and watch the progress. So that will be going out hopefully in the newsletter next week and then on the village website this week. That is all.
Okay, uh, we have no executive session?
No.
Okay, well then I guess that takes us to the end and we'll adjourn to motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
I...
Motion carries.
Thank you all and we'll see you in a few weeks.